The Cabinet on the Highways, Transport and Leisure, Councilor Keith Williams. I propose to say hello Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, I was counting on you. What? As a favour. Councilor Alpern.
I'm Mr Alpern.
Yes, Councilor Blue.
Yes, I rise to move both sides. Now, if you have any last words, you have to speak before you ask me.
You have any second wishes?
Yes indeed, yes, Mr Mayor.
Council Blue, you have to speak.
My memory has lasted quite so long. There you go. Thank you for that, Mr Mayor. Can I start by wishing David and his new cabinet every success going forward. It is going to be a tough job, it somehow has always been a tough job, but it just seems to be getting tougher. And you will be absolutely short of my full support going forward, I wish you all the best with it. Firstly, I would just like to thank everybody, nationwide, for the amazing overwhelming amount of good wishes and messages that I've received over the last however many weeks it's been, seems like quite a few now, it really does matter. And there was one or two perhaps not quite so nice, but they were far in the minority, which is great in countries where there are people all the time. So I'm really grateful to people of Swindon because first and foremost, they're the reason that I came here, they're the reason why I wish to stay here. Secondly, I would like to thank all of my cabinet colleagues, past and present, for their amazing support over the years. We've had lots of laughs in quite a few years, and quite a lot of other things that have gone on, but nobody who hasn't been on the cabinet will ever fully understand the immense workload that it brings. And wherever you go, whatever you're doing, it always demands a huge amount of your attention and time and commitment and everything else that goes with it. So I thank them all for that, I couldn't have done it without each and every one of you. You've been hugely supportive over the years. I think in David's case, and I think Gary's case, we've been there each and every year. Actually, credit is, I think, since I joined the cabinet, it is credit. So when you look back on it, you do wonder whether the time has passed. And I know time flies when you're enjoying yourself, but you know, there's a lot of water has flowed under the bridges of saying, a lot of things have been done. I will miss huge amounts of it, I can't deny it. That was the big problem about deciding to stand down. I actually made this decision a year ago, that if I got through the elections last year, that I would make this my last year. I knew that I had to face up to that, what that meant, because if you're passionate about what you do, and you care about what you do, and you think you've got the ability to contribute to make a difference, it's not an easy work, quite a problem. Because I don't think you didn't have that passion and that commitment, you would have come here in the first place. And so a lot of people, you know, would find a similar feeling of inevitable consequence that the time was coming. But as the year went on and went through the months, I knew I had to make that final decision, I got to a better and better place with it. And it was about November 1, when I decided the time to do it was after the budget that was right, and I think I did it the next morning, so I stayed true to my word, and pushed the button. Since I made that announcement back in February, I've had a lot of time to reflect, and I'm in a really good place, actually. It's going to be different for a while, it's going to feel a bit strange, but I will get very resold very quickly into new beginnings, and I will, you know, look back with a lot of good memories of things past, and maybe a few memories of things past that I would want to quite easily quickly forget, but they come in those jobs as well. I'd also just say that I was actually having a physical conversation with someone, I mentioned to the group that I was with, just came up in a conversation, and I was standing down today, and one guy came up to me and he said, "I'm going to be in for stout." And I said, "Well, actually, I've decided to go." He said, "Oh, how rare." And I said, "What do you mean?" He said, "Well, people who reach such positions rarely go if they're ever called." And I thought, I thought about that, and I thought you could look at that two ways. You could look at that because you really are passionate, committed to wanting to keep on forever, or perhaps for some people, it's more about them than it is about the job. And I never wanted to be one of those people. I only, I really do believe that you come here to do the best you can, so as long as you have the opportunity, to get served the residents, and I have never seen any, you know, irrespective of where, how you get here politically or whatever, my job, in my mind, has been to serve to the best of my ability all of the residents of Swindon. And when that time is up, that time is up, and you move on. And you can still play a part, actually play it in a different way, but that's what it's been about for me. And I think the very first day I started, I made a promise to myself that I was not going to get to a place where I couldn't walk away from this job, because I think it's a privilege to have this job. And I just wanted to make sure that when I felt the time was up, I would make that decision and walk away, and that's what I've done. I want to thank sincerely and from the bottom of my heart, the wonderful people that I've had a very wish to work with over the last eight, with so many years, since joining Cabinet being leader. You know, whether they be officers, whether they be colleagues, whether they be people in other organisations within the town, whether they just be residents, I have come across some truly magnificent people of the light that I don't think I've ever worked with before. A lot of them aren't necessarily still in the same post today, but you know, it really has been a huge highlight to me, about the huge amount of talent, huge amount of commitment, huge amount of goodwill there is out there amongst the people in this borough, whether they work for it, whether they live in it, whether they do business in it, whatever. And Swindon is a really fortunate place for that, and I think sometimes it's just not recognised or understood really enough. So I thank each and every one of you, I obviously couldn't name you, but I think you probably all know me well, I thank the Chief Executive for his support over the years, and all of the advice that he's given to his officer team, but it's been throughout the organisation and beyond, and I just feel immensely privileged to have worked with so many great people. And I really want to thank all of those people out there in Swindon, particularly in the third sector, voluntary in the community sector, who you can't do this job, be in there, and go around and not be completely overwhelmed by what goes on. The style of it, the enthusiasm of it, the commitment of it, just the sheer attitude that they bring to it, and these are often people who get no recognition for anything that they do, they are absolute stars, each and every one of them, and my God, don't we need them, and we need a lot more of them. And I felt really privileged to see all of that, and to actually be able to, you know, be part of that group. Tomorrow morning, there is the One Swindon Conference, which I had hoped to be at, to sort of say my goodbyes, because that's been quite a journey in itself, unfortunately. I've done an indecent thing in rushing off to the airport straight after this meeting, to try and fancy the sun, and so have a break. So I'm going to miss that tomorrow morning, but I'm going to ask David to just say a few words for me, because they have been amazing as well, they've been there on the journey throughout, and I'm told that there's over 100 new people there tomorrow, and the numbers just keep growing every year, and that's what One Swindon should be about, and it's going to really deliver the success that I believe it can and should, we just need to keep that process going on. It is time to move on, I shall be back, don't chill at once, I shall be back in the frontline role, because I believe leadership is a one-way street, and it's time for other people, I will still be part of the council, I will still be there to give our support. It's been a hugely important part of my life, I wasn't in a particularly good place not long before I became leader of this council, and I did a huge amount to sort of still keep that up over the years, despite some of the months trying to not be down again. But I will always regard this as the very best period in my life, because I think it is one of those not-for-a-lifetime opportunities that you don't give price. And I thank each and every one of you, despite, I'll say some really nice things about everybody over here, despite the fact that you've given me provocation not to over the years, because I think on a personal basis, I think each and every one of you has been great to know and to work with, and have had some good jokes and some good laughs. I don't appreciate some of what goes on, as you know, I came to this chamber not liking the way politics was done, I would happily say I'm leaving this chamber not being any more impressed now than I was then. But because at the very bottom of this very, very last comment, there is only one thing that matters, and the only one reason why anyone should sit in this room, is because we believe we can do something to help the people that we represent and move this borough forward for the betterment of all. If we can't do that, we shouldn't sit here, and sometimes we just get a little distracted away from that for other reasons, which we won't go into, and I just urge people, particularly in these difficult times, just to keep dragging ourselves back, when we have that urge, and I bet we'll see some of it tonight, to move in another direction. But leaving all that aside, thank you, and good night.
Thank you, Rob. Yes, Mr Mayor, just before we get out of here, some nice words there, Council Blue, but I know on your agenda, you've got group leaders on their nominees to speak, will you allow two members from this side to speak? Certainly. Thank you, in which case, can I just start by echoing what Council Blue said in summing up, yeah, you know, there will be lots of knockabout here tonight, I'm afraid, and that's just the way I think, but I think it would not be unfair to say that everybody in this room does have the people of Swindon in their hearts, and for whatever angle we're looking at it, might not be my angle, I haven't done that, from your angle, but I think that we do. I would just like to congratulate Council Red on becoming leader, and I look forward to working with him in the coming months, hopefully, and I'd like to congratulate, obviously, Council Blue on his seven years, which is seven consecutive years in office, which is, I think, in this council is quite an achievement. It's well-known that we've had our differences politically, but I've always found him very easy to work with on a personal basis, and he's always been very kind to me, I've gone to him and asked him things, and he does his own credit for the hard work that he's put in for Swindon. And there are, talking politically, some legacies that Council Blue has put in place that, you know, we applaud, Family Life Project, I don't think would have gone so far without the driving force of Council Blue, together with the drive to join up public sector services in the One Swindon project, I think that's, and I think Council Blue's probably had a little regret, because it's been just as I think that is really taking off, One Swindon project, and I'm hopeful that thanks to him, it will benefit the people of Swindon in the coming years, I'm sure it will. Finally, I'd just like to take that to you, to thank Council Blue, and wish you the best of luck in the future, for his future challenges, and wish well to him and all those who are present here.
Thank you, Council Blue. Your number two is speaking, here's Council Water.
Well, from one former leader to another, you're joining an exclusive club. So welcome. On this occasion, I should certainly be kinder and gentler, and probably a bit of length, you know, if you would expect. First, honestly, I would like to congratulate you, Rod, for seven consecutive years. Do you want to be reminded? No, you have certain people, whether it's in the way you would have chosen, it might be a different situation. I'm sure, Rob, you wouldn't expect me to make a lot of your achievements at this particular council meeting.
It's not going to be private, is it?
I wouldn't say it's private to you. I think it's up to your group to make those particular points. And no doubt they won't be saying when we hear the new leader of the council, how successful you were in your channel of office, and I'd leave them to do that. However, I wanted to reflect on a couple of aspects that you, Council Blue, have, that I've found, that I'm sure others have experienced during your time in office. Firstly, the debt of the Labour League. I found, Rob, to be at times, an iron leader. I know some of you might be surprised by my particular comments, often being highly robust with me, and at times, you know, as group leaders, I've come up against you. Now, let me highlight some of the robust clouds of leadership with me, almost numerous times when I was struggling to take in the standards, I was told that I hold the record for the most number of standard complaints over the years I was the group leader of the Labour Group. And thank you for giving me this accolade, it didn't do me any harm, and it didn't do you any harm as a hard man within the Conservative Group. Rob, you were also robust with me as chair of the group meeting, agreed to throw me out to the chair of the group meeting back in 2010, despite you being customary for a Labour leader's foremost position. You took me off the board in the company of boardroom directors, and you'd expect me to be a bigger individual. However, I want you to know, Rob, I don't take these things personally. Yeah, I'm not on the way, but remember you've got to come to our executive meetings of former leaders, and you know who's on there? Yeah, I won't mention the names, I'm just curious. However, and for many of you, Rob, would be known down the years as a very visionary leader, and just I felt I'd contacted you on these big ideas that have come about over many years. There was, of course, the town centre, the waterfront, that led to Swindon being compared to Venice. That's a very good, possibly, marketing occasion, but I think apart from that, I mean, there are situations on the margin roundabout about playing the Christmas tree up, and what a wonderful thing that drives to get to be traffic lights on it. And thank you for taking this in this break, it's been, and of course, Rob, it won't go without me saying about the issue of wifi. Of course, Rob's great vision, also great free universal wifi wherever you were in Swindon. Therefore, I move on to that situation, Rob. There are other people who also pay tribute to you, which in Mark can help you. They've asked me to present you with a book here, which they've signed, and they've described you as inspirational ideas, which have brought to Swindon, and I think, you know, it's something that you need to treasure for people who recognise some of the things that you've achieved. To mark Rob's time in office as Swindon's visionary leader, I have come together with others to give you some celebrating presents, you know me, Cambridge Derek. Firstly, a book on the canals, signed by Wilshire and Barter Canal Trust, because we know you're a big fan of the canals. Secondly, I have a wifi meter, so now wherever you go, you're never going to be without wifi. I'll present this to you, and I hope you remember my group, who have contributed to this position, on a final and serious note, Rob, I sincerely wish you all the best, we had our differences, you worked hard for the people of Swindon, and made all things go well, and relax in your home.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you. Can I just write a reply, you may turn out to be wrong, Derek.
I'd like to guarantee you're right.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just share the truth, of course, actually, to give good wishes, I think good luck to David Reynolds, I think he'll need it, I think, in the future, but also to Rob, because I met Rob the first time as he was actually telling that polling station, I can't remember, I think he was in the Clinton's seat, and actually the central wall, it was the central wall, wasn't it, yeah, all this time together, and the thing that's close to me was, he came to us as such a nice chap, I was just, he's conservative, he's lovely, he's nice, and it was a revelation to me, and I think all the way through your career here, that has been the thing, it's not about politics, it's about the big picture, the idea of being in Swindon first, and I noticed actually you actually liked The American Pheasant, you wrote a little palabat to the piece, and obviously he writes very good, obviously he writes the stars as twice a bit different, and obviously he has slightly more powers, but it's all about championing Swindon, and I think probably the best result of all this is actually being the One Swindon project, Guy can bring us all together, and I think the best thing I've ever saw of that, I think it's often, it's just the talking shop is a reality, and now it's becoming towards actually how it progresses, we've actually seen how now, help, we're actually putting in money to actually help us keep our group of councillors working, and that is largely real proof that that is working, it's a partnership where we can all contribute, and something is going on from that, so I think that is such a great tribute. Guy doing the One Swindon is a great idea, I think it will give us support. And the other thing is actually, you've actually been in the lead when this is probably the worst possible time for local governments, and I've been in local government for a long time, and I can't remember how I could have had any worse time than this, really. And sometimes we talk actually about people not wanting the local government to exist, but now they actually still want it to exist, they don't use any money to do it, which is obviously not a great deal. So I'd like to pass tribute on to you, and actually all your good work over the years, it's been fun, well, fun, that's a strange term, actually, for local government, but it actually has been an honor, and it's been really good having you there, because I think you are beyond politics, and it's been a great thing for me, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Page. Now, now to your agenda, my question is, can I?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr Mayor. As Brooke pointed out, Gary and myself have been with Rob every single year that he's been leader, it's been a privilege to be in his cabinet, we've obviously had a very close view of how he works and goes about business, and I think we all agree that, aside from his side, he's thoroughly committed to Swindon, he's made all of his decisions in the best interest of Swindon and the people of Swindon, and I'd like to thank him, and to our council. I have got a list here of Rob's achievements, surprisingly, it's very different from Derek's, which I'm sure Rob's pleased to hear about, it's not necessarily a comprehensive list, but it's a very long list, but I might pick some of that. Clearly, the headline is that he has been the longest continuous serving leader of the council, and I'm sure that would be the headline of his time in office. He's built on Council Board's work, who was his predecessor, and he's taken Swindon from being listed as one of the worst councils in the country to one of the best. He's overseen the construction of Swindon's award-winning new central library, that was built on time and on budget. He secured Swindon one of the key sites for the Olympic torch with the aid of the big screen. He helped BBC Radio One stage its big weekend in 2009, which is Europe's largest free music event, and that ties into his passion for art and culture, and he's always seen art and culture as being a driving force in as part of the council's regeneration, which he's also very passionate about. He introduced the two-pound-for-four-hours parking in the town centre, which has encouraged and increased the footfall over the last two years, and promoted Swindon's diversity and unity through Mella, Pride, and the Literature Festival, and other events. Some of you will probably remember the 50 promises that we launched under the Council Board, Rob has overseen the delivery of the vast majority of those, which has included 14 new or refurbished schools. One of the other projects that was at Rod's, a part of Rod's agenda, was the register office, and getting relocated into this building. I remember him outlining his vision for the register office and the new service, and it's come to fruition, I think, exactly as he would have wanted it to, and it's been a huge success with the increase in all of the births, marriages and death registers that come through the office. That's a difficult idea, isn't it? Council Blue referred to the One Swindon partnership, which we'll be celebrating tomorrow, as was pointed out by Rod earlier on, we have a huge increase in the number, I've been to every one of those over the years, I believe we have 314 individuals representing various groups and communities from across the borough tomorrow, and I'll be delighted to pass on any comments that you have, Rob, to them, but clearly you were a driving force behind the One Swindon partnership, which is part of Future Vision for our town. You've promoted the development of locality working, which I think the whole council supports, although I didn't probably differ on exactly what that should look like, but clearly we've all signed up to that, and you've also delivered the new Stronger Together model, that's proving so useful across the council and working partners. You oversaw the introduction of a weekly curbside recycling, which at the time, I think, was quite controversial, but now most people see it as one of the contributory factors towards us achieving over 50% recycling. You oversaw the completion of the restoration of the council park, and also, of course, we shouldn't forget that we were the first council to remove fixed speed cameras and road safety, and it's improved as a result of that. And now being adopted, of course, in the country. So I was hoping not to be too controversial, I did cross out some of the suggestions I was given, because I thought it wasn't suitable for the occasion, but I think from that list, you get a real flavour. As pointed out by Rod earlier on, we have a huge increase in the number. I've been to every one of those over the years. I believe we have three and fourteen individuals representing various groups and communities from across the borough tomorrow. And I'll be delighted to pass on any comments that you have, Rod, to them. But clearly, you were a driving force behind the one Swindon partnership, which is part of the future vision for our town. You've promoted the development of locality working, which I think the whole council supports, although I didn't probably differ on exactly what that should look like. But clearly, we've all signed up to that. And you've also delivered the new stronger together model that's proving so useful across the council and the partners. You oversaw the introduction of a weekly curbside recycling, which at the time I think was quite controversial. And now most people see it as one of the contributory factors towards us achieving over fifty percent recycling. You oversaw the completion of the restoration of the house and park. And also, of course, we shouldn't forget that we were the first council to remove fixed speed cameras and road safety has improved as a result of that. And it's now been adopted, of course, in the country. So I was hoping not to be too controversial. I did cross out some of the suggestions I was given, because I thought it wasn't suitable for the occasion. But I think from that list, you get a real flavour of Rod's contribution to our town. On behalf of the council, I'd like to thank you, Rod, most sincerely, for what you've done. I wish you all the best for the future.
I'll move to the vote. And councillor Ball, for the group, be thankful service as the leader of this council. All those in favour? Item number seven, appointments committee.
Mr Mayor, I rise to move that for the view from now to the local council, that councillor Nicky Saw be appointed as chair of the Health, Safety, and Security Committee, and that councillor O'Malley be appointed as chair of licensing committee for the management of this full year. And that councillor Adam Farahmaz be appointed vice chair of licensing committee for the management of the...
The appointments committee. And for this, we don't mind it. Councillor Ball?
Is this a vote we were taking on the chair of the Health scrutiny committee?
If this is councillor's wish, we'll take over the vote.
In which case, I'd like to nominate councillor Redmore.
Any other nominations?
The second up, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. All those in favour? Councillor Redmore is being chaired. Against? Are you part? Those in favour of councillor Saw? Councillor Saw was elected. Councillor Ball?
I think I have nothing personal against councillor Saw at all. But as she's not even on the Health scrutiny, I've never been on the Health scrutiny, I think this is a very poor appointment. I also think that because of the Health and Wellbeing Board, which will now become the fourth in May, that we need a very strong scrutiny committee to oversee that to the health of the people of Swindon. I think this is a very poor decision.
I'd like to thank you back for the answer, councillor, in May. Are the rest of the nominations approved? Those in favour? Those against? Minutes for confirmation, item eight.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I move the minute one, one five bracket five of the cabinet, and minutes thirty two, two, five of the corporate governance review working group to be confirmed and adopted. That's the corporate governance review.
Mr Mayor, I give notice of amendment to minute one on five and minute twenty eight five by substituting the amendment on the white papers for twenty eight five two and twenty eight five three. I'd like to see forward adders to the white papers so that the line reads, that is councillor approves draft community governance review recommendations, with the exception of that of considering all submissions and then as tabled.
Is that my second? Councillor, is that seconded? A second, Mr Wood. Councillor, poll your order, Mr Mayor. Poll your order, councillor Ball.
Can we have a ruling?
Can we have a ruling on the validity of this directly contradicting amendment?
And as was asked by Mr Colville, Mr Mayor, the amendment is just a part of the recommendation rather than maybe to give the whole thing.
Can I respectfully request that the borough solicitors advice on that matter be recorded? Of course. Councillor Ball?
Yeah, can I also give notice of another amendment to the recommendations as tabled on this group paper?
Councillor Dickinson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I move these, move these positions, which I believe can have to be have two amendments, neither which I'm going to accept per se, because these recommendations were a cross-party agreement involving members of all three parties over a committee that lasted eleven months. One of which, yes, was debated, but found at the time the evidence wasn't there, but subsequent data evidence may have appeared, which may sway members of this council to that. And the other one, I'm very disappointed in that it didn't appear anywhere, and is contrary to the only evidence we have got. But I'm looking forward to the two members proposing and seconding the amendment, finding evidence to propose it and oppose, draft and parish council. I would like to thank, make a few thanks for this. This has been an eleven month process with, excuse me, what's that, Richard Paul Cox? A fair amount of evidence submitted, and this is just where we have petitions, one copy of each petition, not all petitions. So if I've got all the evidence, it will be, you just go on to file. So it hasn't been taken lightly, this decision. And I'd like to thank, say, the director of law and corporate governance for his patience throughout this. I'd like to thank the elections manager and her team for finding many, many rows. And she and her team now probably know every street in Nye backwards, as they've plotted every single house as far as I can see. And last of which, committee member services, who made sense of what we decided, which was sometimes not always obvious to the corporate governance working group. So I'm not going to carry on much longer just to say I look forward to hearing what evidence is new subsequent to our last meeting, which was nine days ago. And so I look forward to this to hear evidence. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Does the second motion return for speech?
I reserve this, Mr Mayor.
Which one is seconded, Mr Mayor? Seconded for motion.
Sorry, I thought I had seconded. I reserve my right, Mr Mayor.
Can we move to your hand, please? Pleasure.
So thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I've already covered the motion and the white paper. So the community governance review has been underway for over six months. I suppose you heard from councillor Dickinson. So it's been eleven months since the very start, and it's likely to have some important decisions to make. In one area, as turnout, more people have taken part in the process and voted for any councillor in the local elections across the town. So it has actually been very inclusive and involved lots of people. In stage one of the review, I took a survey of the residents I represented in Lower Colview in Nye and submitted a proposal to create a Lower Colview in Nye parish using the borough council ward boundaries and set out a positive case for that change. The recommendation from the working group at the time was that further consultation is undertaken in stage two to determine the Colview boundary with suggestions of south of the railway line or south of Oxford Road as the actual defining line rather than the borough council boundaries. Therefore, in stage two, with Colview being suggested, it's smaller Colview rather than just Lower Colview, further consultation was undertaken in the area I represent in Nye. A revised proposal of setting out a positive case of change was submitted and covered why a Nye parish and parish council would meet the statutory criteria of being more effective, convenient, accountable, and would better reflect local community identity. That is what the statutory criteria and the legislation means that we have to work towards as part of the governance review. The amendment highlights a number of these key points. It's very clear about that, where it's a separate defined community with its own identity and a set of place with shops, schools and a community centre. It is separate from Stratton in that sense. A Nye parish would be set large in Swindon and is a viable entity with eleven hundred properties present in it. This is within fifty of the size of Chisledon, and that's very much the kind of thing that we would like to see take forward. So I'm a big supporter of parish councils, and having a Nye parish is what we'd like to see for the residents of Nye. The amendment, which I do hope members can support, increases level of representation in the parish from three members, as it stands at the moment, to seven. Now, our submissions to the governance review can show that residents are prepared to engage and take part in the Nye parish. And this will actually trigger the first elections in fifteen years and a second in twenty eight years. And that's actually quite right. As a parish in this area, there hasn't been an election of local residents since nineteen ninety seven. And that's what we're trying to do, to franchise local residents and try to support this initiative taking place. It's very much about having Nye residents running Nye, rather than Nye residents being involved in a Stratton parish. And that's what they kind of feedback we have received is. To further support that case, a petition was organised, which has gathered support of over four hundred and fifty individuals representing twenty nine percent of all households in the area. And I do acknowledge that a small petition has been organised opposing a Nye parish for line of residence being set up. And that's where we stand here tonight. It's important to everyone to realise and to note that it is not necessarily a numbers game. There is no alternative proposal that's been put forward during the corporate governance review over the last eleven months that will actually set out how the existing governance arrangements are or can be more effective, convenient, accountable and better reflect community identity as set out in the statutory criteria. And that's what we're very much talking about is a Nye parish for Nye residents. However, it's also important for us to recognise that if local opinion is ignored on this issue, what would it mean for future debates in this chamber where twenty nine percent of residents and households in an area would like to see something take place? Are we really going to turn around and say, no, we aren't going to recognise that position? It's for us here to decide what happens to tonight, because it's for our decision. And I believe that the amendment can be supported by everyone, because it meets all of these statutory criteria, clearly gives positive reasons for change, and will better reflect local community identity. We've also got another amendment here put forward tonight, which is also seeking changes to the review recommendations. And I actually do support in many ways that item one. I can't support item two on that amendment. So I'll be interested to see what the reasons why that change should not be taking place, even though the parish has consulted with those residents, and actually the evidence is that they should include those streets. And I very much look forward to hearing the debate and the way it progresses. I do hope that local councillors in this group could recognise this is a local issue. Local residents have given their views on this, and there is a positive case for change, and that we can support it. Thank you.
Seconded to speak, or reserve?
Reserve, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Ball, right. Mr Mayor, for part of this journey, I acted as deputy to the leader of this group. We were faced with facts and figures that appeared to be fairly consistent, but they were interpreted two different ways. There was one set of figures around nine percent that said we should expand one of the parishes. And that same figure was used to disconnect, the logic of which didn't make sense. So we agreed to go out again to find out further information to reinforce what we thought we were seeing in the data. When we did that, there was a debate on where the line should be, which the information concerning the Nye resident should start and where it should finish. I left that meeting with a boundary being stated other than the one that's been submitted. In other words, the facts, the figures had to be gathered from an area larger than the one that's been submitted to you and to us to debate tonight. The word Colview has been dropped from the conversation. Lower Colview has been dropped from the conversation. And indeed, there were questions of going all the way up to Oxford Road to see if that should be the boundary we should have been discussing. Now, when I look up Gerimandring, it says this. It says, when you alter a boundary in order to achieve a result, it can be suspect as a result. I left in my duty with a boundary in mind that was agreed at that meeting. When somebody comes forward with a smaller submission based on one area with facts so say being presented, we do not know what questions were asked, we do not know how they were asked, which houses did they knock on? Were they already conservative, supporting people that you went to? Were they Labour people they went to? Were they liberal people you go to? Did you condition the vote in such a way that only this result should be this way? We have no facts behind that. You may not have a head mind, but you and I were at that meeting where we left with a boundary in mind. We have now had a new submission. I will say this, whether the argument was won or not, it's a mistake. Second one to note. If you go and create a small boundary parish, it doesn't have sufficient funds to enable it to act properly. You do not get the personnel who's attached to the area. You do not get the worker that can do things beyond the council. You end up being some kind of letter writing group. The facts, the figures to enable that to happen is around fifteen thousand people. So what you're doing, if you support this, is just going to get a group that will review plans, who will do things such as writing when things are not as they want them to be. What you won't get, what we've all been working through localities, is a person on the ground who will be able to go and knock the branch off the tree or cut the grass where you need them. To get that, you have to have such a high precept with such a small number, it's not workable. And if you do do that, they're going to wonder why they even accepted it in the first place. I think it's fair that we tonight, if we are going to accept what has been suggested tonight, we go back out there and do it neutrally, independent of this council, so that we actually get the facts and figures, and then we can start to believe them. Councillor Watts?
Councillor Peter Watts? Thank you, Mr Mayor. What I would like to say is that this amendment has been put at the very last minute, as is quite usual here in this chamber. What I would like to say is that the results of the surveys carried out in the CBP district of Nye are shown on page three of the agenda, item eight, which are the minutes of confirmation of the corporate governance review of Tuesday, the second of April, twenty thirteen. At the bottom of that, of that page, you will see that there were two surveys or coming out that showed a significant majority of people who were against the formation of a new parish in Nye. The opposite side of the coin was the, was as a result of two separate petitions being put in and added together. Now, what I would like to say is that this only drew signatures in total of all of the ones that were signed of approximately thirty percent of the residents. And I would suggest that that is not an overwhelming desire of the residents of Nye to form a new parish. I would also like to remind the council that the consultation period for the governance review was closed in March. review was closed in March and that to reopen the consultation again is ill-advised. Councillor Heaton also stated that there had been no elections for a parish councillor in the Ward of Nye for, I think he said, 27 years or something. In fact, I was elected in 2011 as the Ward Parish Stratton Margaret Parish councillor and it was on an unopposed election. Now, that is still an election and I still represent the people of Nye. If that's not an election, then I would like to ask the members in the Conservative group, is it the same thing for the six councillors who are going to be returned unopposed in the woodchir local government elections? And at that, I'll rest my case. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, as a point of information on this, the actual total petition submission on this one, because there's a further one this afternoon, is 456 for, 394 against.
councillor Grant?
Right, and it's important that we come to that. Point of order, Mr. Mayor. I haven't had a view of a further petition and has it been validated by the person to tell? Thank you.
councillor Grant? councillor Grant?
The principle here is that the recommendations advise that a change of governance is being asked to be imposed upon a number of people here. This is not the same as the boundary changes where we all have a bit done by how we could best farm out the political makeup of Swindon. This is asking for an actual change of governance, people will be governed differently by these proposals tonight. My view on Nye is that the people have spoken. There is clearly no, in a contested, which this has been, a contested proposal, there is no shadow of a doubt, there's no overruination for the formation of a Nye parish council, none whatsoever. The two sides have been out, the results, we stopped, so the parish council and its supporters stopped collecting signatures petition because, we could go on forever, whatever it was, but there was a deadline, there were a number of deadlines, the final deadline, as I understood, was the weekly last working party took place. At that time, it was clear overwhelmingly, 366 to 298, if you were elected on those, you wouldn't say, on those figures, you wouldn't say you didn't have any legitimacy, you didn't have a mandate. The people of Nye voted against the proposal for a parish council. There's no two ways around this. You know, and the petition for the proposal to form a parish council went on at least three times along, in my view, as I understand it, as the petition opposed to it. There is no, we're asking people to change their formation of governance and I think that they have told the people, that told this council exactly what they think and they do not want the formation of a parish council. As councillor Watts points out, there were 366 on one side, 298 on another, that comes to around about a third, 30% turnout of the people of Nye. Well, there's a lot of people in this room who are elected on 30% of the turnout. So, and you know, these people, there were other people that were also canvassed, surveyed, that gave no opinion one way or the other. So I suspect it's even a higher turnout than the 30% because clearly if you mention the petition, it wasn't recorded. So there is no doubt, I mean, if we are, councillor Blue said earlier about doing the best for the people of Swindon and clearly the people of Swindon, the people that have been asked, they have given their opinion. There is no one, I'd be very, very concerned if councillors Blue, Dickinson and the mayor were to vote in favour of councillor Heaton's amendment as they were more in agreement with the recommendation as the evidence was put at the last working party. In relation to our amendment tonight, I think again, it's down to what the actual people think and it's very difficult, I know that this should have been aired earlier during the working party, but if you look at the figures involved of the streets that have been, only 6%, 6% of those people wanted to go into Stratton Margaret Parish. And I suspect that all councillors who have instigated the event here have already been, I suspect, have been approached by more than 6% of those streets not wanting to go into Stratton Margaret Parish because again, you're changing the way they are governed. And it's clear, it's clear that the parish councils and the constitution behind it, it's a very complicated thing. I'm not altogether sure the people in those streets were given a full area of exactly what it meant for them to transfer into Stratton Parish Council. So the view here tonight is, I'm sure, is that the overwhelming view of the people, the people of Nye is that they do not want the formation of a Nye parish council. And I think that in the streets around Headlands and Wheeler, it's clear, it's clear that whilst the 6% did want it, it's clear subsequently from them, when this idea got out, it's only them that people, people start taking their opinion is that they do not want to be pursued into Stratton Parish Council and want to remain outside of the parish council. And I would hope, hope that we take a lead from the people of Swindon both in Wheeler Avenue area and in Nye tonight, because if we're not, as councillor Blue says, what are we doing here? What's the purpose of this? And I'm very, I'm hopeful that councillor Renard will support our amendments as well and back the non-formation of a Nye parish council, because I'm hopeful that we get off on a good start in our relationship and if we're looking to...
They must be published and to ensure that persons interested are informed of the recommendation and that's been done throughout. And I have ensured that the parish courts have been informed of what's been going on throughout the period. The issue I think really that you're referring to is that there have been no new submissions received after the deadline, but there's been no evidence of support for the submission that we made before the deadline. As far as this evening is concerned, section 96 of the Act allows the council to either implement enforced recommendations or decide to what extent it will be effective recommendations made in the review. And after that, the council wants to publish that decision and the reasons for making the decision and take such steps as sufficient to secure that the persons who may be interested in the review are informed of that decision and those reasons.
Could you just repeat that? councillor Grant? councillor Grant? Could you just repeat that last guidance that you've asked us to stay?
Oh, sorry, I don't know anything else. The Bowl is the Act, section 96 of the Act is concerned, what it says is that as soon as practicable, after a principal councillor, I mean Swindon, has decided to what extent it will be effective recommendations made in a community governance review, then the council must publish that decision and the council's reasons for making that decision and take such steps as the council considers sufficient to secure the persons who may be interested in the review are informed of that decision and those reasons. And that is set out on page four of the line of papers as recommendations for the working group, Mr. Mayor.
What I didn't touch upon was the nature of petitions and as many will know, get the answer that you look for by the way you write the questions. Do we for a time know whether or not those regarding Nye may now be bearing in mind that they will have to fund their own community buildings, things of that kind? Have all those issues been addressed and therefore the huge term buying has actually covered all of those kinds of expenses that they will be subject to in the future?
Not a bad comment, Mr. Mayor, it's likely the working group, the working group considering all this matters.
Chair of the working group?
Mr. Mayor, if you did anything, question now in the session, if anybody wants to make any points in their speeches, then absolutely reply to it.
councillor John Ball?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Blue, in his farewell speech as leader of this, referred to the vote which was at the last full council meeting. As everybody called it, we all voted not to increase council tax in certain areas and we also voted not to increase the non-parish rate. We kept it as existed in London. But here we are, a few weeks later, being asked a vote on the post group that would increase the total tax of 3...
The proper vote. councillor Grant?
Tony, Mr. Mayor, I was born and grew up in Rhode Island in Delhi or County London there, depending on where you're born. And in my early years, the people there changed the boundaries on a regular basis for the wrong reason. What we're talking about tonight is changing values of parishes all over the place for the wrong reason. I believe we should fix the wrong reason first. Now, parious boundaries should be based on geographical and community boundaries. It shouldn't be fixed because somebody thinks by rates are too high, let's get out of that parish and go in that parish. That is the wrong way of doing it. And I think you should just stop all this nonsense and go back to square one.
councillor Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is obviously a contentious issue. There's a few points I'd like to make. We often talk in sometimes paranoid terms about the will of the people and I think it's one of those occasions where we have to recognise that largely election turnout isn't particularly right and even where we have more than 50% of the vote, I think probably... You may not agree with it, just because you do not agree does not make it immoral. So therefore, we can only do the best we can, but the fact is, there's proposals before us, we have to fall with you. And I think what councillor Heaton has said does meet the statutory criteria and it now falls to us to make a decision. But I'm happy to support what councillor Ball and councillor Grant are proposing. I don't see why these people should be placed into the parish. And on exactly the same basis, I'm not going to accuse you of gerrymandering or the like because you have made a proposal in respect of what happens in your ward. And councillor Heaton and Hurley are doing exactly the same thing, only it is in reverse. You don't want those streets to go in, the councillors Heaton and Hurley don't want Nye to remain. It's, if you support one, you should really support the other, there's no, no material difference. So for those reasons, I will be supporting what councillor Grant and councillor Ball would like to do in respect of not putting those streets in Stratton Parish. I will be supporting councillors Heaton and Hurley in respect of those sides, great Nye parish, because whilst we can't prove their work support, I think the evidence such as it is, is sufficient. There's no point in doing these things if where there is grounds for change, we don't do them as a matter of principle. So for those reasons, I will be supporting amendment paragraph one that councillor Ball and councillor Grant are supporting, that which councillor Heaton's already outlined.
Thank you, councillor Theresa Page.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did indicate earlier that I had influence on the parish. I was the chairman of the parish council and on Stratton Parish Council for 20 years and this is just a point of information for my fellow councillors. Stratton Parish Council was awarded, an award three years ago of a quality council, which is one of the first in the area. And I wondered what Nye people would do with a parish of their own when they would use up on so much that Stratton Parish Council would have off them and have off of them. They would use up on allotments, playgrounds, their varied rights. Nobody has thought of that. So they'd be out in the middle of a very, very small area and we certainly don't want to lose Nye, because we'd be much of the people that to lose them.
Thank you, councillor. councillor O'Grady?
I'm wondering in the questionnaires that were sent out and the discussion that's taken place, whether it's been made absolutely clear to the people of Nye that if they want the same level of services as they get currently as members of Stratton Parish, they will have to pay at least as high a council tax as they do in Stratton. And I think it's really appreciated by people in certain parishes, what sort of services other parishes provide. There are some parishes, such as Stratton, that provide a far higher level of service than other parishes. As long as Nye understands this, that if they want a lower council tax, they're not going to have all the privileges that they have with such as allotments and the things that the councillor Page mentioned, that they get in Stratton. I'm also a parish councillor, so I do know a bit of what I'm talking about here and I would be concerned to think that the people of Nye think that they're going to have as much for less money, because they won't.
Thank you, councillor Page.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't going to speak in this debate and I was quite happy to let my two fellow ward councillors make the argument, but councillor Holland raised something which I think was particularly pertinent in this debate. He made the point that for five years, the residents of Nye have been trying to get themselves out of Stratton Margaret Parish Council for financial reasons. By being elected just under 12 months, I spent six or eight weeks before that election knocking on doors around the ward and the number of people that spoke to me about Stratton Parish Council, whether they stayed in or went out, was nil before I was elected. And I've had one person turn up at my surgery and I asked him and he said, he wanted to leave and he always wanted to leave Stratton Margaret Parish Council. And I knocked on one door and the lady said, who's running a campaign to get us out of Stratton Margaret Parish Council? I want to stay in, I want to know who it is so I can write a letter. It doesn't, if I was getting the mailbag that my two fellow councillors for the ward have been getting, I would be standing alongside and saying, I consider a need for change. I haven't had that. The two surveys, whether they were running them, whether they run till tomorrow morning or next Monday morning or next year, they will still come out because the question will be probably weighted, money in favour of, do you want to save money? Do you want to stay with it in Stratton Margaret Parish Council? We knocked on doors, they knocked on doors. The fact is that there is no great groundswell of opinion, whatever people say for Nye to leave and councillor Holland reading that the cat out of the bag at the end of the day is going to be a political decision. Do the Conservative ruling group want to support councillor Heaton and councillor Hurley and take Nye out of Stratton Margaret Parish Council? Or do they want to listen to what the people are saying? And what the people are saying actually is probably, well, on Monday we might want to go back and Tuesday we'd probably want to be back, so why care to sit?
Any other speakers? I wasn't going to speak on this, but as a former resident of Nye for quite a few years, I would like to shed a little bit of clarity in the debate. I moved to Nye in 1981 and I left in 1994 to move to West Wyndham. I was elected to the Borough Council in 1983 to represent Stratton and Margaret. I was re-elected in 1987 and I stood down by abolition in 1985. There was a period of years when I was actually Stratton Parish councillor, elected from the Nye and Coldview area. The difficulty with the way the Stratton Parish is put together is that if you're up at the top end in St Philip's, you've got the investment in Meadowcroft, the park and the community centre. If you're in the middle in Grange Drive, you've got Grange Drive Community Centre and the sports fields there again. As you actually come down to the bottom end, the very successful community centre in Coldview is actually Borough Council, I remember, well, a torch used to sell cheaper beer in my time. And then you come to Nye, which has a small green park in the middle and that's it. Yeah? Now, the people in Nye, they'd say parish rate is the people in the other parts of the parish, but they never in my time used to feel connected anywhere above Oxford Road. You know, they tended to see themselves as being in Nye and Greenwich, the fields, the sports fields on Greenwich were probably their perimeter. So, Nye has always been in terms of wards in the Stratton Parish, the sort of runt of the litter and never probably has ever particularly felt it's had more than a bit of grass cutting in terms of services, but it pays the same parish rate. And I think that's the problem before us tonight as to whether, you know, we can make fairly straightforward difference if one parish is Nye separately and there will be very little ground maintenance required to be done. And then most of the decisions will be minor power planning, which you probably wouldn't need a heavy duty parish office to help run the place. But anyway, I'm about to, people who've got more recent knowledge, but clearly Nye is a little bit different for a few years in St Philip's.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Called councillor Hurley.
I was once, Mr Mayor. Most of what I nearly found, thanks to crisis, got to say. I don't believe he was talking on the streets last year when we were campaigning, but the number one remark that we had was the fact that Nye didn't feel part of Stratton and why would we pay such a big price there? Agreeing with what the Deputy Mayor said, maintenance wouldn't be real problems, there's not that much to maintain. We, we can sort of talk about statistics, we can say, yes, we've got more, Stratton's got more, we know for a fact that people signed both petition. Why? We have to look at it from the point of view that there's a groundswell of opinion in Nye. Yes, it's not everybody, but the people that we've spoken to, the majority of the people we've spoken to want their own parish, they want to be in charge of their own...
We now have the vote on the amendment, those in favour. The first amendment. We're going to read the old one. All those in favour.
When you said before, Mr Mayor, can I give a piece of information, being from a similar vote that took place in Milton Keynes? All the residents had to do was go and take it and do an appeal and it was...
Can I add? Can I just bring the vote for it? Thank you. Those against? Twenty-three against. The amendment is carried.
Can I amend the vote please?
Can we move on to the second amendment, please?
Information there, just to clarify that this will go to appeal and if it's found that people haven't been listened to, the decision here tonight will be overturned from wherever us.
Second amendment.
Second amendment. I think, I think I've outlined the reasons for this in the earlier debate and basically it is that the amount of people, the amount of people that took, the amount of people that were surveyed in, over Weir Avenue, Heatham and et cetera, the amount of the 6%. Clearly, I don't agree with what I've got up because those figures mean nothing now, do they? It doesn't matter how many people, it depends upon what you as a Conservative group want. And this is a wholly unacceptable political decision we've had here tonight. You know, it is, it is, you've overturned democracy. There was a, there was a fair, there was a fair debate, there was a fair, fair, fair camp, there was a fair proposal. You went round with yours, we went round with ours, we's got more votes by the fleshline given, that is the evidence. You've simply spat in the face of the people of Nye tonight and it's an absolute disgrace, an absolute disgrace. And, and, and you'll probably want to, you'll probably, you'll probably want to agree this, this amendment, I hope you do, because it makes sense. What you've done elsewhere tonight makes no sense whatsoever.
The part that, minute thirty-one of the, of the line of paper, make sure that it could be known to the rest of the record being accepted. The amendment before you now is in relation to Head and Maitland area, do you understand that, that I understand it from councillor Grant?
That's it. Councillor Ballin.
Those who know me, and I've got to know most of you now, whether I agree with you or not, I've had cordial relationships with practically everyone in this room. And I always try to be fair and I always try to be true. The only reason why this part of this amendment is here tonight is because it didn't match that 9% figure that led to us going out again. When we looked at it, we overlooked the obvious, was that's close to 6% of gathering information. It wasn't sufficient for us to say, the people have spoken, we need to be in Stratton. That was the previous debate, the facts are on now, it's exactly the same debate where councillor Holland is right, this is about governance, it's not about money. The effect is money. But the people have spoken and they have said...
So, substantive motion, Mr Mayor, is of the line of paper, as amended first by the amendment by councillor Heenan and secondly, the amendment by councillor Ballin.
Right, we'll go to the vote on this one, please. All those in favour. And those against?
Mr Mayor, we won't care on that vote.
Councillor Grant, would you respect yourself? I'm looking around members when I'm trying to talk, they're talking and I'd rather them keep watch, okay? So, if they recall their conversations, apply for speaking, then we get somebody to watch on. What we've taken is the vote on the amendment, the second amendment there, as on the line of paper.
Just to clarify, Mr Mayor, we're taking a vote on substantive motion, which is as amended from the line of paper, but as amended by councillor Heenan and as amended by councillor Grant on the second amendment.
All those in favour. And those against? The abstain? Anyone to do, councillor Heenan?
Sorry, Mr Mayor, we've got another minute, four one minute twenty-eight five, the talk for government.
The models were the page made there, I made it, reference to, no, sorry, twenty-eight five. All those in favour. Against? Gary?
I'll move minute one-two-two of the cabinet confirmed and adopted.
Anybody wish to speak? I've got the motion then, all those in favour.
Mr Mayor, sorry, do you have a speech? Is it the community party?
No, this week before the vote. What's the problem?
I just, just very quickly, I support this, this process absolutely. I would just like to, when we move forward with this, to take into account some members of the public who have had quite a, how do I put it, an interesting time on planning basis this year. If we're going forward and trying to get the public to take more of an interest in the planning process, the community centre process, I would suggest that we try and work out a, get up a working party to include those people from, say, the Gullisfield, the Gullisfield campaign, Tappawarra campaign, Hennecroft campaign, to come together with members to try and, to try and make this work, to see what their views are and how we can take it forward. That's what I was suggesting.
Well, there you go, the Gullisfield is a simple, sensible idea. Councillor Ballin.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I remove the minutes hundred twenty-six, one and two of the cabinet, be confirmed and adopted? That's the Swindon Health and Home Board, it's on page twenty-nine and pages hundred three, hundred and twelve for the background.
Second, Mr Mayor. Thank you. Tonight we'll promote councillor Hallin.
Just on the Health and Home Board, I would keen that, given the importance of this body, the future of Swindon, I would propose that the leader of the opposition group has a spot on this... by Honda's reduction in production line identified and also it's important factor of work. How it develops its business model in the future, it is important that Swindon Borough Council highlights the town's capacity to achieve their future aims whilst ensuring that job retention, job creation is out of the way.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you. The task group has not yet finished its work. There are job fairs being run over the next few weeks. They're working, members of the task group are working very hard to ensure that all of members, not only of Honda's and staff, but also the supply chain are involved and that's what is happening. And it's working outside of Swindon to companies such as Takeo in Gloucester, which also was a company. And if anybody heard the news today, the Commerz announced that for the 850 we've done to see, there would be less than 100, right, would not be filled by voluntary we've done to see, and that's at this stage, right? So, we've anticipated that a number of people will not have worked, which will get pretty supportive because there are many that are looking to start up their own business. And also SBC, through Swindon have invested in direct connection with Honda, they possibly...
If you don't give us access, we'll be back with a place and you'll get arrested and children will be taken into care. And that, those things happen, that's what is said. And this was an opportunity, I hope, where we could use the virgin test technologies of the iPhone to require the Vaders to make a proper record of their preliminary attendances at the property. And it's not just the, the householder that we should be concerned about, businesses too. And indeed in businesses, we're talking about quite a lot more than occasion, and we have to use deals on businesses as well. And no matter who runs a council, that will always be the, the backstop, the different Vaders. You've decided that everything's working okay, from this side of the chamber, we're not convinced. And I would rather that the Vaders were doing the job correctly from start than to be involved with colleagues and others in developing strategies to prevent the Vader doing their legitimate work. And the former lead member for housing used to be involved and created those very strategies in preventing the Vader doing their work. The Vaders have clear rules, they should follow them, they shouldn't trick their way into the household on the first visit in order to give themselves authority to break the door down on the second visit. And that's what they do, that's how the rules work. For example, televisions, they would tell the, I wouldn't say victim, maybe I'm right, they would tell the householder that you have to leave your telly, have you got any other tellys in the house? And the householder would say, oh yeah. That gives them the opportunity to take the best telly when they come back with a wagon. Whereas people like me would tell them, have you got a little telly upstairs? Throw it away because they're required to leave you on television. That's the sort of thing that I don't want to get into. I want Vaders to be operating properly from day one, that they give the notice properly when they go to talk to the tenant, they won't be tense all the time, it'll be the householder, that they are upfront with the debtor. they are upfront with the debtor. And since then, the end result will be the possession of your goods. And enter into over...
Already, that's 400 residents sat in our public gallery, I think that's actually quite good to hear that, because people want this to be done. So it's quite clear that it can be done, it's quite clear that people want it to be done. At this moment's cabinet meeting, I suggested that we have a cross-party working group to ensure this happens. And I think it's a reasonable proposal to make recording and webcast work. As the parties came together nationally in the Leveson, I think that it's a time that the parties in Swindon work together to implement open democracy, and I think that that was the way forward. And again, as a result of that discussion, that we now have a recommendation to support recording as a standing order and allow access in the same way media provides access. And as a start, as a start, we should allow recording of meetings as well as from the public gallery, from the floor of the chamber, so we get the best possible result, and we make it as easy as possible for those people that want to record council meetings, and we ensure that the output is the best as possible it can be. But I also think that cross-party working group can help us stay track of advances in technology so that we ensure the result is clear and the best we can. It's about working together to put our own house in order, to rebuild trust, that's why we propose a cross-party working group to agree these proposals, that so we work together and open up our council meetings to the public, and that's why I support our amendments. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Renner?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have to say a little bit perplexed as to why the amendment is required.
...style that it almost suits the administration. That's the brave concern that a member on that side of the chamber had. He's changed sides, he's on our side now. The reason why I took up the challenge was, I know in the past that you've let me see ITV and others walk into this chamber and film it when it's some event of signing a piece of paper or somebody with feathers coming out of their hat, and you've approved of that straight away, no problem there. But when it comes to talking about recording ourselves as a means of capturing things, there always seems to be a reluctance. And in fact, we have magic figures of large sums, oh it costs this in this council, it costs that in this council. And we couldn't understand it on this side, but it doesn't. A Christmas concert was free, high definition clarity. Member over there may have bought a disc and a property she has, good looking phone. Very, very easy to record meetings here, piece of cake. If it's done by the voluntary sector, comes very, very cheap indeed, because very often they don't charge, they are here out of interest. Other ones may make a small charge. If you think that councillor Rob Blue has made a legacy of one kind or another, and wifi has been talked about tonight, way before all of this was Swindon Viewpoint, cable television, that is still here today, it's captured our lives, it's captured this town. So why we were so strong behind this was simply to say to you, please stop putting the barriers up, stop playing around the words in the way that you want motions, and simply capture what happens, simply tell the people what you're doing. Mr Mayor, the last time we had a vote on this, when I was present, when it was asked with somebody filmed, we had members of this chamber vote against it. So every time you say we allow it, don't forget there are members here who don't want it to happen, and you've got to ask the question, Mr Mayor, why that is. I'm not ashamed of what I say here and what I do here, in fact, I'm considering hurrying out the bulbous of my head, put some advertising on and get some money for their council. So at the end of the day, let's not be frightened about what we say here. If we're speaking on behalf of the people, the lowest cost is free, it doesn't cost 70,000 pounds a year, it doesn't cost much more than 3,000, even when it's done by Swindon Viewpoint, it should be supported. Thank you, there, I count through.
Thank you, I just can't sit here and let this go on. You talk about open and transparency, then you are, you try to make opposition out of something we all agree on. Now, I think it was Tony Blair, somebody... Tony Blair, I didn't have a lot of time for until today, until he said they should stop opposing and come up with some ideas.
This is our idea.
We've got some trappings to...
This is our idea.
Have you read minute 127? Because if you've read it, we've just agreed...
With our ideas.
We've just agreed that we're going to move this forward. So please, stop making, and to my knowledge, we have never, ever refused anybody talking anything in this chamber. And if anybody can tell me I'm wrong, I'll accept that.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I take it from the amendment, actually, the most valuable thing, actually, I think actually a cross-party working group, and I think that's the way forward, because really something 127, it doesn't say that, it talks actually about becoming more, it doesn't mention the idea about you talking about broadcast on a huge scale, it talks about other things, it is not what is proposed here, so I totally support the idea of working with it. I mean, at the moment, we actually have, of course, the Simon, I've actually taken photographs of our heads, which throughout life, always denied, actually have had a dog spot, now I realise I have.
...council this, or previous council, and actually said, so... And any debate and our vision on this is completely entrepreneurial, and it's very good that we can have that recorded for local residents to see...
...with some of the analysis councillor Dempsey did about why our town centre is struggling at the moment, but I think we can all agree that our town centre is as good as we would like it to be. An apology to people who are the economic and environmental committee, they'll affirm you tell this story, but I think it bears repeating. My wife and I are eating out of baby. My wife is single-handedly trying to stimulate the global economy by buying every bottle of things that are worth for this baby. But she has not spent thousands in Swindon Town Centre. We sat down and worked it out last night, do you know how much we spent? We spent thousands, we bought cots, we bought wardrobe, baby wardrobes, we bought sterilizers, we bought video monitors, but we've spent four pounds in Swindon Town Centre. All the rest of it has been on the internet, it's been out of town shopping centres, like Mums and Frackers at Mountain, my constituency, it's been at supermarkets, because there isn't a choice in Swindon Town Centre, there aren't the shops, and we couldn't spend that money there. We would like to support our local businesses, but they're just not there. We would love to see something happening in the town centre, but not only would we like to see something happening in the town centre with pop-up shops, the Conservative Party nationally want to see something happen, want to see something happen in Swindon Town Centre with pop-up shops. Lord Yon and Eric Pickles are some of the people who have opened up these pop-up shops nationwide, and Mark Criss, the local growth minister, has offered written to install one of their shops in his office. I'm going to quote now from his blog, if I can find it on my phone. Yes, I can. He says, so this is Mark Criss, the local government, the local...
...to us. My point, Mr Mayor, is that this is something that the administration with outside bodies have been looking into and doing over this period. To conclude, as the chairman of this Federation of Small Businesses and a business owner in Swindon, and also a local resident for over 22 years, and someone who cares passionately about Swindon, who does look to joy talking Swindon down, I welcome any investment, whether that's pop-up shops or the new Union Square, I know that's going to be laid down, but the new Union Square development...
Time is up. Councillor Page, anyone wish to speak to the others?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I mean, what I've heard actually from councillor Bredon, councillor Comanzess, is that a work has been going on, which we haven't heard about. But I actually liked, we're actually in motion, now I do actually, let's have a look at pop-up shops, we've actually heard the pros and cons. It would have taken a great deal to take that to cabinet, because as I say, if you are actually looking, you have a lot of knowledge about it. So now you've quite a big thing about this, because your amendment really is just plays to the MPs, and talk actually about how well in Swindon is living though. That isn't quite the case, is it? I mean, how many people think Swindon's town centre is a great place to do shopping? Oh, it's something down there, well then. You know, so it does meet that extra, and I think pop-up shops, could it be better? I'd like to see the pros...
...to the minister, and actually, we have a current member who has gone to the government, has not thrown his arms up in the air and approved something for opposition say, without any kind of alternative plan or reform to take place on this, and actually has a solution that could come forward with the support of the housing minister, which doesn't cost council tenants any extra penny. And that's where we stand here tonight. We are here tonight to try and agree the principle behind this, and I'm actually quite supportive of this. We again have another debate where we have one side of the chamber which is sitting quietly, with best behaviour, and another which is interrupting all the time and getting quite personal these things. We need to quiet above this and listen to everyone's opinions on this. We have two views on this across the chamber, one where we actually have a solution that would minimise the impact of the end of occupancy or bedroom tax on council tenants, and if we agree that tonight, fantastic, that's a step forward on this one, and it's something that actually could take place across the country without any too much trouble. That's actually something Swindon would be good to know about. It isn't just a case of throwing your arms up in the air, went to the minister, bragged to the government, asked for reports, and actually they're not coming forward with any alternative ideas. Oh, no, no, this is a point I will make tonight. David Milburn has already said that he voted for repeal of this or come forward with any alternative reform. So what are we going to do on this? Mr Mayor, understanding all the seven nights, can we move some vote please? I don't think we're going anywhere like continually debating the debate other than along the night here, it's gone eleven o'clock, we've still got enough debates to go.
Seems a very sensible idea, councillor.
Mr Mayor, by the order, if I can't speak, I've had my hand up for ages, but I'm here to be allowed to speak before me. However, I could just, what I wanted to say was, is the boroughs and listeners happy? Happy that this is a legal, this can be, this is legal, because I tend to side with councillor Poppet in matters like this, and as long as the boroughs and listeners are happy and we can give another reassurance that this is legal, we can now, I mean, go to the vote. Particularly as councillor Heenan has just said, we should listen to the people and find that quite an odd point.
Do you want to go to the vote? Excuse me, I'm very far, we haven't heard from... Sorry.
I say to councillor Poppet, Mr Mayor, the issue is the way that it was worth it, I intend that it is lawful, and it is a political decision by the council whether it wishes to endorse the procedure or not.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. It's very interesting to hear in this town centre, because actually, the party that deals out the personal tax is not this party. We're getting started, because we care strongly about things, and this motion, and what I present about it is what I care strongly about. Okay. Now, what you're proposing here is, you've actually said, councillor Heenan actually said that my motion was a modest proposal. Well, you asked what you said, you've said, I voted down, you've said this is actually quite a modest proposal, it's asking us to write to the minister, or you've already been in touch with the minister, and to, he rests the motion. But what you're actually proposing is principal, which we're not even sure is legal, because councillor Poppet doesn't think it is, and the boroughs and ministers think we can only propose it, principal, is that we take money from the poor to give to the poor. And this is in a month, where millionaires have had an enormous pay cut. This is true, you can like it or not, but this is the truth. And I think that's a disgraceful idea, actually. Yes, they are. I don't respect you, too, I know it's something that affects how anybody votes here, I understand how it works now, I do call it a slot. But we don't accept your amendment, and we think you should vote for the substantial motion as it was, and I think it's shameful, we certainly regret that of our governments here, because believe me, they are very poor, and I think, I don't think your cruelness is unkind, and I think a lot of you care about poverty, but this is not the right way to go about it, and they will, the legislation will be repealed, believe me.
Right, we're working on the amendment, so all those in favour? Twenty-nine and four, again? Twenty against the...
Should you endorse this, it will put us in a position, the budget will have to be amended at...
Following the meeting, the children in the pupils' opening school meeting, on to a separate march, there are several recommendations made by the panel. Some of the recommendations included, a fully trained communications officer or team should be nominated for all school openings and closings. A communications plan should be drawn up in such projects. Engagement with the public should be as early in the process as possible. At all times and stages, nature of and motive consultation should be made explicit. To be clear, the report states that none of these actions were placed in the cross-school decision-making process. We must learn from the recommendations and understand fully what is required amongst the council. His key role is to represent and engage effectively with the electorate. It is important to learn from things which deliver into letter, and we must strive to improve our processes for any future decisions on opening and closing schools. We have already seen progress in the consultations into a new town centre school, and also from a new school at the Tapewarm area. Residents have been able to have a say as to where the school should be sited from a very vague stage. Old town residents feel unattended, they were not afforded this cursed seat or right. From the report, it states in several places that, I quote, "it was obvious that the local authority was intent on citing the school at Croft from June 2010." This was taken from page 13. However, consultations did not take place until September 2010. The report states that the opening of this school generated a significant amount of opposition from a considerable number of local residents. This is perhaps not surprising, given that they have reasons to believe there was...